Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a work session of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have two sets of minutes for approval. And they've been submitted. And I have a motion to Pete. Okay to do one motion for both minutes? Or should we do them separately?
I do them separate.
Okay. April 19th, 2018. I shouldn't even ask.
I'll second it.
So April 19th, 2018, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry. Who made the motion to approve it? Okay. Because you're doing all the talking.
I'm just not raising my hand.
Yeah. What else is there?
Yeah, I'm not looking up there.
Okay.
All right, let's move to the minutes from May 17th, 2018.
I'll move again.
Sure.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion approved by Mike and a second by Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Okay. Let's see. Okay, now we'll go to table. Glendaviers, first on, and I know they're here. What's on the table?
That one's for the continueers, man.
All right, so Glendaviers.
Want me to do this one?
Sure.
Okay. This has been on for about four months now. If you recall, we had a meeting where Joe was not here. You had made a motion, Dan, to disapprove. I had seconded that, and the two of us voted in favor of that. There were two against, so that was a no action. And we were basically waiting for Joe to come back. Since then, we've heard from further discussion and argument from council. And it's given us a great deal of thought. And although I do not like this project, frankly, I don't like the impact on the environment, but I think, given the issue that we were asked to address, which was basically whether it brings any greater compliance, I don't see where that is obviously the case. So I'm basically moving to approve. And I think that, basically, we have to rely on what the planning board found with regard to environmental impacts. And, you know, because we gave them that authority voluntarily, and again, as much as I don't like it, I think they have met their burden. So that's the basis for my motion.
You know, and you changed your motion. And it's interesting, because I just find it hard to believe that there's no environmental impact when you move 3,500 truckloads of dirt.
You guys might not be disagreeing on that point.
Oh, okay.
No, I know.
He is saying we ceded our authority, if you will. We had a secret process on that issue to the planning board. So I don't -- they could be wrong.
It could be wrong. Somebody could bring an action to --
That's right.
But I think we're bound by their determination with regard to the environmental impact issue.
Well, how about the other issue is you're going to have them do all of this, and it's still not up to code. Since when do we give variances of it not being compliant with code, even after you give them a variance?
Because this is not a variance. This is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
That has its separate section and its separate standard. Obviously, the code is drafted mainly for structures, in which this doesn't involve an expansion of a structure. But the language is pretty clear that if it promotes substantial or greater compliance, then that's the standard we're supposed to look at.
Okay. You can vote the way you want, Mike.
I respect what you're saying.
Even when he says it with that tone?
That's all right. I've known for too long.
All right, so we have a motion to approve. And did we get a second?
I'll second.
Andres, second. Is there further discussion?
I don't know. One thing, I don't recall if there's any stipulations on parking on the street that have been made in terms of posting it and make sure people are not parking on both sides of the street, whether we were --
They're gonna be.
But if it's --
They're gonna be.
You know, posted with signs, that's part of it, that it's not going to happen? You know, those are --
I would make that a condition.
No parking on the street, right?
Right.
Because, okay. And we can put up no parking signs? We suggest?
Well, hold on. Let me ask Andy something on that. If we put that as a condition, is there -- is it rendering this application useless because now we're back into parking less than standard? In other words, I mean, I don't know how many cars you can park on the street.
I would --
If you guys know the answer, then you give him a shot, and then you can --
I believe the -- part of the planning board approval addressed the parking issue.
Were we going to do one side with no parking?
Yes.
Something like that.
Yes.
So the other side legally, you can park there.
Yeah, I think one side of the street was going to be posted as no parking.
I don't know if you guys remember that or not. Is that --
I just want to make sure that's somehow put in there as part of our comments as well.
Yeah, there was also a thing, a part of that petition, and I didn't go back and check the accuracy of it, the petition that we just got from the neighbors.
Yeah.
That said, even with the -- under our zoning laws, with the size of that building and the capacity, they needed 181 spaces or something like that, which they wouldn't have even with this additional parking. So --
It was closer, is the point.
Yeah.
No question about.
Greater compliance, so.
Okay. So you're satisfied, then, with the fact that --
It's already addressed. If it's addressed in the planning --
Addressing the planning board resolution that one side is going to be prohibited, one side, another one. No expansion of the use in terms of numbers of people. And we talked about that, and I think they've already said they don't intend to do that. Okay. All right. Anything else that I'm going to think of that spent so long with conditions? Okay. I'm going to -- I am going to vote no on this motion, and I'm going to explain why. I understand what you're saying, and I totally understand what you're saying. I've been thinking about this statute, and the question that I asked Betsy about, okay, if we have an application in front of us that improves it by one spot, is that good enough? And her answer was yes. To me, the statute has to mean more. And it must mean that, hey, if there's any effect from the increased usage, let's say, that -- and I admit, this is my reading of the intent, that we have to weigh the cost, if you will, of increased usage versus the increase in conformity. So in that sense, and I could totally be wrong, although it's not going to matter, to me, the environmental stuff still is in play from that perspective, not from a secret perspective, but from that perspective, that the cost is not high enough for the gain in zoning compliance. But I totally get what you're saying, and I've, you know, good job of advocacy, pointing that out. And frankly, you know, we are where we are with this. So we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Three to two.
Three to two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really do appreciate the amount of time we've covered the board.
Okay, just make it a good project, but I know who I'm talking to, so. All right, so number two, we're just going to keep tabling?
Yeah, the planning board didn't receive any new information, and this was tabled at the request of the applicant. So motion to table.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're done with table. Let's go to the top of the agenda and ask if there's any clarification. Giving me time, of course, to pull up the applications. Thirty-one. All right, so number one on the agenda, which is application thirty-one. Any questions for clarification on this? Andres is shaking his hat. Thirty-two. Now, again, I'll ask the question. The number of the application doesn't match the order of the agenda. Did I ever get an answer when I asked, why is that?
Well, the application --
I mean, a real answer.
The application number is given -- as soon as we get an application, we assign it a number. So it depends on when the application comes in, as to what the application number is.
Uh-huh.
But when we put it together on agenda, we try to put it in an order that will, you know, we will try to do like the residential first.
Okay. Well, there's logic to it. Good. So let's see. The next one, then, is thirty-four. Any questions on this one for clarification? No?
I guess this is the one with the Polmar petition. And the applicant said that the code that he was referring to was not accurate, that he was using, and that it changed. But how long did that change? Is that the one that I read in that they were using the standards? This is the five-acre parcel, right? Five point three?
It was incorrect on the website as of April, and then it was switched in May after he brought it to your attention.
It was when we went through the codification is when it changed.
That was the new year?
It was a long time ago.
Well, when they went from the code from the 1% to the set amounts, that was at the new year that new code went in, right?
That wasn't part of the codification?
It was, I believe. Yeah, it's not something that happened after the codification.
No. That seems like it's been a while.
Well, you've been working on it for a while, but I'm trying to think of, when did it go into effect? Was that basically the new year or a little before?
Before.
Seems like it's been a while, that's why I was --
Yeah, no, it just wasn't on the website, I guess, correctly, right?
We had an informational brochure that was based on the prior code that he was going by, and we had not yet updated the brochure.
And the brochure was on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because prior to that, the code didn't have any limitation on size.
It was open to everybody. Yeah, and then it went to 1% across the board.
Correct.
Okay, so on number three, any questions? All right, number four, which is the Carter Road. We have a letter on that one and some photos. Any questions on that?
I think those are letters of art, right?
Yeah. These are the ones that I've seen. Number five, larger building. No, no questions? Okay, good. Six is the sign down in Penfield Road. And seven is the outdoor seating, so pretty clear. I don't need to rush through that.
No.
Okay. All right, we got 10 minutes, folks, so let's take a little break, and then 10 minutes we will start the meeting. Anything else? All right. We will stand adjourned for 10 minutes. Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be the public hearing. We will ask the applicant to come up to that podium there and give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done, board members will have some questions, most likely, and then we'll invite anyone in the audience to come up and speak about the application, do the same thing, give us name and address, and then speak his or her mind to the board. After the public hearings are adjourned, we will take a brief recess, then we'll reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's application, applications, and take care of any other business that the board may have. Members of the public are welcome at both sessions, of course, although deliberation time is time generally reserved for conversation amongst board members, board members with staff and with council. As I said, you're welcome to stay. We have a medium-length agenda tonight, I'll call it, but I think we'll move it along pretty well. If you need to leave or want to leave, you can call staff tomorrow and find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. Every month, we like to point out that the town does, we think, a very good job of notifying citizens, including neighbors that live near the applications, that the applications are going to be heard. And the town does that so that people are more informed of their right to come in and do that. We think it works well. The town does that by sending neighbors that live within a certain distance a postcard, making the applicants post those signs that we all see, posting the agenda on the Internet, and then also, as I say, the old-fashioned way here at Town Hall. We think it works well, and we appreciate any input that anyone has. Really, it makes our job easier. And with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you all, folks, very much. We are going to take an item out of order, and I think we're going to call Agenda Item Three first. Is that correct, Andy?
Yes.
All right, may we have that, please?
Joseph Franch and Susie Borden, 71 Kingsmill Court, Penfield, New York, 14526, request an area variance to allow a shed with less side setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 71 Kingsmill Court. The property is owned by Joseph Franch and Susie Borden and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 094.18-1-52.1, application number 18Z-0035.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for switching the order. I appreciate it. I actually, I didn't realize there were six board members, so I apologize. There was something I wanted to address when I was talking. There's two sheets.
Why don't you give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm running out of order.
Not yet.
Okay. My name is Susie Borden, and I'm at 71 Kingsmill Court in Penfield. You're welcome. Sorry.
No problem.
Here, you want to --
Okay.
Mike, you got to share.
I want to share when it's on show.
Yeah, sorry, there'd be enough to share.
You're good.
All right. So Joe and I would like to put a shed in our backyard. When we first bought the property, unfortunately, we didn't do adequate examination of all of the setbacks. And what we discovered, once we started wanting to build out the backyard and do berms and vegetable gardens and sheds, was that we actually have, we seem to have a few additional setbacks. Our home is located on a bit of an island in that neighborhood to the -- I'm terrible with directions, so I actually had to write them on a piece of paper. I'd say to the left, but that doesn't help anybody. So to the west side of our property is a private driveway that leads to two houses going to the backyard and a potential third at some point. To the east yard is a little, small part of our property, and then there's a pretty severe drop into a swale that I believe was man-made, leading to the retention pond that's two lots back. So we have, we're squeezed. So when you look at our property, it looks like it actually has much more room than it does. And to the west yard, we actually have 20 feet of setback, which puts the setback line within a handful of inches of our side property, where our house is. So when we take into consideration the backyard setback in combination with the side yard setback, if we were to put the shed there, and if you look at the diagram that I sent out, that I just distributed, where it has on the northwest back corner between the two berms where we've planted new trees, in order to accommodate the proper setback and still be able to enjoy the grass berms that we're fixing this spring, summer now, the shed would come considerably into our backyard. We eat dinner in that little bump out, because it's the only place to eat a meal, and so it would be, our dinner spot would be looking right out onto there, and then it pulls away from the backyard. If you look to the northeast back corner, which is the other possibility, there's a really steep drainage from, there's natural drainage going into the swale. And so we would either have to put, well, we talked about a retaining wall to hold it up because of the slope, which would block the drainage, or we'd have to build concrete pillars to put it on, stands, so that the water could continue to flow down into the swale. So that, when we went to option number three, is where we landed. So if you see the red dotted line where it says shed, we've put in a driveway extension. We're finding that the side load garage is cumbersome. We have a lot of family who comes out of town, from out of town, and stays with us, so we're putting in a bit of an extension for a nice parking turnabout. And we've put down some nice block on the side there to create just a walkway. And behind that is where we propose the shed. It's really flat ground. The shed itself is really attractive. We plan next spring to side it, the same as our house. So there's a diagram, or there's a picture of that, that I just handed out. So it's going to match with the house. The doors of the shed where you would go in will actually be facing the street, so it would open right onto the driveway. And so the variance we're requesting is actually six feet into the setback. So, and if we go with the setback, and I think I have it detailed out, I wrote this a little while ago on here, it cuts pretty far into the space that would be between the deck and the shed, and it would leave a really cramped space that would be pretty unattractive.
Excuse me, we have a request. If you could hang the map up.
Oh, it's tiny, but sure.
Well, he can zoom in on it.
Oh, good. Okay, yeah, of course.
Or if a -- do you have the survey, too?
I do. I sure do.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is that helpful?
Yes.
Is that what they're looking for? Okay. Do you want the shed as well? Is that useful?
Might as well. It's a nice-looking shed. Put it up there.
It is a nice-looking shed. So that's a request. So we're looking for six feet. If we put it where the setback is, it's really awkward with where the driveway extension is, because it cuts halfway into the driveway, and it would push the shed significantly close to the blocks that we put down, the walkway area, and then the deck that we're going to do, hopefully, in the fall. And we've talked to all of the neighbors. We haven't, everybody seemed to be fine with it, no problem. We've also let them know that it's our intention to make it really nice, put some climbing vines, make it attractive, so it's attractive for everybody in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess you answered most of my questions here. You spoke to the neighbor that's to the east side, the one that's probably the farthest away, but the side of the shed?
Yes. Right. Yes.
And they have no issues, no concerns that were raised?
Lauren and Peter. No, we went out and talked to Peter. We explained what all the work was that we were doing, and that our intention was to -- he said he got the postcard, but he didn't do anything. And he said that he has absolutely no problem with that. They actually have a really lovely backyard. They've been there for 11 years, so they've got some really nice pine trees, lots of privacy. And he said that he didn't foresee any issue with him, because he doesn't really, he doesn't have a good view into that space.
Sure. And then just to clarify, the way the backyard is laid out and your side yard with the drainage and the slopage, it'd be difficult to place the shed in most other places that would work for that yard.
Exactly. There's actually a pretty significant dip. There's one picture where I'm really far into the background. It's hard to get a sense of what that angle would be, but it's a pretty deep slope. It's deep enough that the guy who cuts the lawn has an issue with it, right? He's careful on that side spot.
Sure. And then you said you will be matching the siding and color to what your existing home is right now?
Yeah, because it's red, and I, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's really nicely built, but it's, the colors would stand out, not nicely. So it'll be just like that.
Okay. And no exterior light fixtures or things like that facing your neighbors from that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Nope.
That's all I have.
Sure.
Hi. You've told us that 10 feet is not good, because it's too close to the walkway, and that six feet would be good. But what about something in between? Since we're kind of charged with giving the minimum amount that really is needed, so what would you be comfortable with if you had to move it more to the west in that same location?
That's a great question.
Thank you.
In a perfect world, I'd love to not have to move it. If we have to, then I would certainly, I'd accept what you decided. I can tell you that our neighbor, who Peter and Lauren, who we talked to, and they're directly across from that, their shed is, from the center of the swale to the edge of their shed, is 28 feet. From the center of the swale to where we're proposing is 41 feet. So their shed is actually closer to that property area than ours by 13 feet. Or is that right? Yeah.
Okay. So you --
I guess what I'm saying is that I'm hoping that our request is not unreasonable based on the challenges of the yard. And of course, if we can't and we have to shift it, we will. It lines up really nice. It would create, moving it further in the other direction would create less of a nice line when you're looking at the property. It actually creates a really attractive line, because it aligns with the driveway. So visually, it's very appealing in that way.
Okay.
I've got one question for Andy. How close to the house can that shed be?
There is no requirement. It can be as close as they want.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, thank you very much.
All right. I am going to head out.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll go back to one?
We are.
Kirill Shabalin, 47 Dundas Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625, requests an area variance to allow a shed with less side setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 47 Dundas Drive. The property is owned by Kirill Shabalin and Nicole Green and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 109.13-2-35, application number 18Z-0031, and I hope I didn't mess your name up too bad.
Good evening. Kirill Shabalin, 47 Dundas Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. So we are building a shed as well and asking for two-feet setback variance. The primary reason, well, two primary reasons is utility and aesthetics. We have limited flat ground in our backyard. Most of the property is on a slope. So what we're asking is to put the shed in the southwest corner of the property to maximize the flat land. We have a seven-year-old. He likes to run around. So as far as aesthetics, you know, again, because of the limited space in our backyard, putting it out, you know, 10 feet or more becomes a central focal point of the backyard. It's a nice shed, but nobody wants to have it as a focal point. Impact on the neighborhood, it's not really visible from the streets. We talked to the neighbors on both sides. Actually, one of them is here. They had no issues with building a shed on the property. The neighbor who is impacted, Mike, he has a basketball court and a boulder in his backyard, so I don't think they're going to build anything there. I think that's pretty much it. I don't know. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking at the picture, and there's a little, like, jut out from your property towards the basketball court. Is that where you want to put it?
Yes, that blue line, yes.
Okay. And like you said, it's a basketball court there. What other buffering is back there?
I think, so if you look at the pictures, there's a compost pile, there's firewood, there's a tree, and some lawn-mowing equipment.
Okay. And are you going to have any electricity to the shed?
No, we will not.
So no lights?
No.
Okay. And is this the neighbor that is directly affected, or are you on the left side of his house?
I'm on that side.
Oh, you're on the right side?
Yeah, I'm four to your right.
Okay, you own the basketball court. Okay. That's all I have. Then I'm listening to him. How's that?
Sure.
Anything else from the board? All right. Anyone in the audience?
Hello, I'm Mike Fallett. I live at 43 Dundas Drive in Rochester, New York, 14625. I'm the neighbor of Kirill and Nicole. So just here to say that we're okay with the shed being the setback. That back corner of the property, when we bought the house, the basketball court was there. And we actually did some work, kind of, there's a bunch of rocks in Penfield, as everybody that lives here kind of knows. And we kind of pushed some of the boulders to the back part of our property. And along that side has been, you know, it's basically right next to the basketball court. Where the trees were, where they, Nicole and Kirill, they just kind of cleared a bunch. It used to be all woods area and they just cleared it out and made that space and flattened it out. And if you look at where their property is, there's still a tree there. And I can attest, if they put the 10-foot setback, it would be like pretty much right in the center of that area that they just flattened out. So I think it makes logical sense, from my opinion, to have it closer to the property line. And we really don't utilize that space in that corner of the lot for anything like Kirill says. I had my compost bins and stuff. I'm a pretty avid gardener. And, you know, that fit well when it was all wooded and now it's a little bit, you know, it's a different look back there. So having the shed there actually offers some coverage because then it allows me not to have to move my compost bins too. So, yeah, but we're okay with it having a closer setback to our property. Whatever's, you know, works for, you know, Kirill and Nicole and the town.
Do you see any significant difference in the slope by putting where the two-foot line would be as opposed to the 10-foot line? Frankly, I didn't see a level spot anywhere. And it didn't seem to be sloping in any greater degree 10 feet from the property line than it did two feet from the property line.
Yeah, I think from a logical standpoint, that it goes best in that back corner. You know, if you actually measure out 10 foot from the property line where a shed would be, it would be literally in the middle of their backyard from a focal point standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right. Thank you very much.
Brian and Corella Jones, Ford Joe Manda Way, Fairport, New York, 14450. Request an area variance to allow a larger accessory building than permitted under section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at Ford Joe Manda Way. The property is owned by Brian and Corella Jones and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 141.01-2-2.1, application number 18Z-0034.
All right. I'm Brian Jones, Ford Joe Manda Way, Fairport, New York. So we were proposing for, we were trying to get an area variance for a pole barn extension that we would like to put on to our existing pole barn. And I guess I'd start with this, I have a few things here. This is what we're looking at doing. This is the survey map. Right now, we have a 36 by 60 pole barn right here. And we're looking to put a 14 by 60 addition, basically a lean-to type of a extension onto it. This shows basically the boxes, the 36 by 60 with the proposed 14 by 60 lean-to addition. And this is kind of a rendering of what it would look like. It would have a 10-foot by 8-foot door on the front to match the other doors on the existing building. So an area variance, like I said, is being requested for a 14 by 60 lean-to. And we had checked with the town of Penfield before we even went ahead and got any quotes for this. And we were told that we could do this without any issues because we had over five acres. And that's what, the website agreed at the time that that was the case. So I went ahead and got quotes and everything. And then I got a call saying it wasn't okay, that the rules had changed to only allow 1% of the property size. And since then, the website has been updated to reflect that. As far as, for an area variance, there are a few things that are asked to be addressed. And as far as the, those five, there's five points and I'd like to talk to those. The proposed addition will have no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Would not be a detriment to nearby properties. As a matter of fact, it would have a positive effect on the neighborhood since it would allow us to store things inside rather than outside where they could be an ice or... The nearest neighbor's home is to the north side and this would be going on the south side of the building. So the closest neighbor is over 200 feet away. And so again, this would be on the opposite side away from their house. The benefit that this would be, that this would provide cannot really be achieved by any other feasible method other than being, which is being requested. The third item, the area variance, is not substantial as far as the scope of the addition to the size of the property. As a matter of fact, it, one of the things I was asked is how much would it affect it? It's actually .01928 acres out of the 5.3 acres that we have. So less than two hundredths of an acre. And again, it wouldn't be, have any undesirable effect to the neighbors. The addition would, of this lean-to, would not have any adverse effects on the environment. And that was still, I filled out an assessment, environmental assessment form, and that was submitted. And the last item, the addition is necessary due to circumstances that are mainly beyond my control. We did get a large RV that we'd like to store indoors, especially in the winter months. And for our own good and also for the neighbor's good, not being sitting outside. So anyway, we're trying to be cognizant of being good neighbors as well as keeping, you know, and keeping the neighborhood looking nice. So one of the things I did do is I went around to every street. We live on a street with eight houses. And I got a petition signed, which I think that all of you probably have in front of you, hopefully. Got it signed by the neighbors, saying that everybody agreed that this was okay, that they don't have any issues. And the neighbor that lives to my south is actually here in the audience tonight. And they're, I don't know, probably 400 or 500 feet away and they're also on the petition. So anyway, I think that that kind of explains what I'm looking at doing.
All right. Questions from the board?
So with this addition, would there be any additional lighting placed on the structure?
No. External?
External?
No.
Okay. And what are you going to use this barn for? Is this going to be for any commercial use?
No, no, not at all. It's, like I said, I have a large RV, I have a boat. I have classic antique and street rods, things like that. That's my hobby, trying to, you know, keep the American steel going. And so anyway, it would be, and I also have two sons who are now grown and they have things that they really can't have at their places because they have apartments and, you know, not enough room. So older boys mean bigger things.
So I know, I know you described the contents. Have you considered an hydraulic lift in there instead?
Yeah. Believe me, I'd rather not do this because it costs money. I already have a lift. So, you know, and I had thought about a second lift, but it really would not accomplish. Right now, it is so tight in there. I have things piled around all of these expensive cars. And I'm just, it's just a matter of time before something slips and falls and damages one of them. And so I'm just trying to relieve that possibility.
Is self-storage a better option maybe?
Not really. I mean, I definitely would not trust to put any of these cars somewhere where they're not on my property.
Okay. And then lastly, I just want to be clear, the addition is actually going towards the nor, or the south.
Yes.
So it's actually not affecting the side with your neighbors at all. It's just really going to the back of your house.
Yes, as a matter of fact, right. That's a good point. It's hard to see this little map here, but right now, the corner of the existing barn is right at the corner of our house. So the addition would literally be behind our house. And this is the south side this way. So again, neighbors over here are 400 or 500 feet away. And that's the site it's going on. The neighbors to this side are over 200 feet away.
Okay. And then I know you're adding your roof, you have a sloped roof. Do you have any additional drainage concerns because it's going? How are you draining that?
Well, I know that a couple of you have been out at least to see the problem. But I don't know if you took notice, but the whole property slopes this way.
Okay.
From this point down.
Right.
And back.
Okay.
So it naturally slopes both sideways and back. So there wouldn't be any, any concern at all with...
So no additional drainage concerns?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Anything else from the board?
I just have a concern with regard to the size of this. You have, you have five acres, but you have a structure there now that's a little bit, by my calculations, a little bit larger per square foot than your house. You got it also, you have an area on your lot that doesn't have a lot of buffering. I'm just concerned that you're going to make another addition, which is going to make it even larger than the house right next to it. And I question whether that will have some impact on the character of that neighborhood.
Well, I don't know if you've been out to my place?
Yes, I have.
Oh, okay. So if you took notice, I designed the original barn with a 612 pitch. The house has a 912 pitch. And I designed the barn so that the peaks of the roof are the same of the house and the barn. So that would be this peak is the same as the 912 pitch on my house. They're basically the same elevation. So this going off to the side, this would be a 312 pitch. So I, you know, I don't see any issues with that. Again, it's behind my house. My, if you come from this point forward, this is where the corner of my house is right now. So this is literally behind my house.
Which covers visually from the front, but you also can see it from, from past the house and on the other side as well. The south and the north.
The south and, well, it'd only be visible from the south. This is, this is...
Right.
260.
South.
South.
Okay.
And that's, and that's behind my house. And, and also to the closest neighbor.
I was thinking more the road bends around though, to some extent, past your property.
Oh, oh, the cul-de-sac up, up past? Well, I guess if you're coming down the road from the north, driving to the south, you would see it, right? That would be the only time you'd see it. If you're looking straight on at my house, you wouldn't see it. Or if you're looking at it from the south, you wouldn't really see it.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I see, I understand what you're saying.
So, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Marie.
I'm curious why you picked this size. Is there any possibility you could do with a smaller addition?
Well, I explored that. And for one reason, one reason I went with this size is because I want to, again, trying to keep it aesthetically pleasing looking. I have, I have eight by 10 doors here. And I wanted this to be an eight by 10 door so it looked like it belonged instead of like an afterthought. And in order to get an eight-foot by 10-foot door there, I needed to go to 14 feet wide.
Okay.
And I actually have to move it even a little this way for the overhead track. So I did actually look at 12-foot. I looked at smaller and 14 was the size I needed to go to.
Thank you.
And in terms of the neighborhood question that Mike was asking, are you aware of any other accessory structures approaching this size in the neighborhood?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Tell me about some.
Well, let's see. I don't know the addresses offhand.
You don't have to.
But there is one structure that is kind of up past the cul-de-sac down in the valley. He's, I don't know what size his barn is, but it's probably, it's a lot bigger than this.
Okay.
Because he put a tractor trailer in it. And it's a lot taller, you know? Again, I tried to keep it looking like it belonged, you know, so it would blend in with my house height and everything. I didn't want it, this huge tall structure so close to the house. And then there's another barn, pole barn, right in the cul-de-sac house. If you go up into the cul-de-sac to the right, that, I think that that structure is also already bigger than the one I have. I'm not sure. I don't know what the dimension is. But for sure, the other one is because he put a tractor, his tractor trailer in there.
Okay. And if, did I understand you correctly to say that you are proposing that the depth of this be such that it matches with the current 36 by 60? Okay?
Right.
And, and did you do it more so that it would match or because you needed the space?
You mean as far as the depth of 60 feet?
Correct.
Well...
By the way, just so you know, I don't, I don't think it would look nice if it were half the size, but I'm just trying to get in the record. You may have made it longer than you needed to for utility reasons, but for aesthetic reasons, you want it to match.
Well, and for utility reasons.
Okay.
60 feet?
Yeah.
Three, you know, three vehicles could fit front to back.
Yeah.
If you go even 52 feet or something.
Okay.
You're, you're kind of hurting yourself by doing that. You know, and I've found that especially with the existing barn that I have, that 60 feet is a nice length.
All right. Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Catherine and Manuel Castro, 2164 Carter Road, Fairport, New York, 14450. Request an area variance to allow a two-story addition to an existing single-family residence with less side setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 2164 Carter Road. The property is owned by Catherine and Manuel Castro and is zoned RA-1, SBL number 141.01-1-43, application number 18Z-0036.
Manuel Joe Castro, living at 2164 Carter Road, Fairport, 14450. 10 years ago, and I apologize, I don't have any information, but I assume my wife submitted it all to you nice folks.
Oh, boy.
I am assuming. Pictures most recently. But 10 years ago, we moved into the residence with two children. And since then, we've had two more. So we're looking to add two bedrooms onto our current home. What we have currently is an old addition on the south side of our house, 12 by 18. We're looking to remove that structure and put a 14 by 36, I believe. Slightly wider than the existing. But sort of necessary for the two bedrooms upstairs. It's a two-bedroom addition instead of the one that's currently there. We don't think that the bedrooms are excessive in any way, so, because we were looking at shortening it and finding ways to sort of make it fit within the current footwork. But it just doesn't at this point. And if we were to try to tighten it up a little bit, it would mean that we have to lengthen it. And we're, we're not looking to go any deeper into the existing yard. And again, we're trying to stay within the footprint of what's there. And again, we're trying to stay within the footprint of what's there. Currently, we have the addition that's 12 by 18, but we also have a deck beyond that, which is 15 by 24. The deck would be removed and would be placed in the center of the house, so that the addition won't go beyond the current sort of footprint. We've spoken to all of our neighbors. In fact, I think you guys have a letter from the neighbor to the south, who's, he's okay with whatever we're proposing. Currently, he lives on over 15 acres, and you could, his home is barely visible from ours. I think the addition that we're proposing is, it's about 30 yards from his driveway. And separating our two properties now is just a small row of trees and some bushes. Other than that, I think that's it.
Questions from the board?
Okay, so can you describe the addition architecturally? How will it appear with the rest of the house?
Sure. So we have my contractor here, Ed DeWolfe. We were concerned because this is our second sort of addition. First, we put a large porch, and then we put an addition over our garage. Beyond our garage is a pool, so that kind of prohibits us from using that side of the house. But we're very conscious of the way it looks. I did not want it to look chopped up. I didn't want it to look like an addition after an addition after an addition. So we're going to use the same lines that we used on the addition over the garage and on the porch, and carry that over to the newest addition.
Okay. And then you said this was a two-story addition with bedrooms upstairs. What will be downstairs?
We have a family room. We're also looking to put like an exercise room, just because it's, we need the space upstairs anyway, so it's just going to be a larger family room mostly, but just with a small exercise room off the back that'll lead onto the deck.
And then, how many bedrooms do you have now?
There's technically four, but the fourth is more of an office space. It's really small.
Okay. So you're enlarging the bedrooms?
Correct.
With this addition?
Correct.
What other options did you consider before this addition?
To be completely honest, we looked at moving. But we love, again, we love our neighbors. We love the convenience of, you know, the location. And that's about it. Scaling down was also considered, but again, we thought that we would have to sort of encroach onto the backyard and make that look really long. And so we were a little concerned about that. The fourth bedroom is kind of small at this point. We realized that, but, and so we're thinking that the size, as we're proposing, it's just, it's not excessive, and it's kind of what we need to make it work well enough for us. And we just feel like there may not be any other options on the current property. And if that's the case, then we're likely to find another home.
So with this addition, is that going to be bumping out any further than the front of your house now?
No, it's actually going to be set back about a foot.
Okay.
And in the pictures, they're really small, I apologize. Our garage is set back about that foot, so it would match that.
Okay, so it'll match the other side?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions from the board? I'm sure you can. Okay.
I'm Ed DeWolfe. I'm going to hopefully build this for him. There's a center hallway upstairs that makes the addition work well. You can go down the center hallway and then go to the bedroom on either side of that hallway by extending it for the upstairs. That's one reason why he wanted to go that way. Just made it easier building-wise and use of space versus going behind and taking up the yard space and losing bedroom space, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? All right, thank you very much.
Clifford Pratt, 1347 Harris Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request an area variance to allow a larger accessory building than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at 1347 Harris Road. The property is owned by Clifford and Lisa Pratt and is zoned RA-2, SPL number 095.04-1-9, application number 18Z-0037.
Good evening. My name is Clifford Pratt. I reside at 1347 Harris Road, Penfield, 14580. We are requesting an area variance for a storage pole barn. I have some pictures. Currently, this is the driveway. You come in from the property off Harris Road. We are proposing to put the pole barn off the road, 150 feet or 200 feet off the road and off the driveway in the front lot of the yard. The unit would not produce any desirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There is quite a few pole barns and storage barns directly on each side of the house and across the street. I would request a larger 60 by 40 pole barn for storage due to the items that I have that need to be protected. We have, you know, obviously the lawn equipment and storage equipment, snow removal. I have classic cars. I got a boat. So that size is kind of ideal for what we need. It's mostly, it's to store, you know, my, and secure my personal items. There will be zero impact on the physical environment, the conditions of the neighborhood. As I said, it's set back off the road considerably. There used to be a pine here where the stump is, as you can see. Couple of years ago, we had a storm and the tree came down. So ideally, I'm thinking in between the two existing pines that are there in the front yard. That would leave us plenty of room on each side, from the driveway side and the neighboring property. I was, I didn't know that we were partly on a wetland area. So we had a, we had a property, wetland property delineation report done from an engineer, if you guys would like to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's going to sit considerably away from that area, from what you identify as a wetland. The building obviously would be a new building. It would be aesthetically pleasing, you know. It wouldn't necessarily match the color of the house, although that can be, you know, the colors are not really set in stone at this point. There's also a 14 by 10 framed wood shed on the property that's been there since I've owned it. I understand there's limitations on the storage. So I propose, if you allow me to build that pole barn in the front, I would remove, take that, take that down. I think I have a picture of the proposed.
Can you also put, do you have your survey with you?
I do.
Would you mind putting that up there?
So this being Harris Road, this is the driveway. So we are, we are requesting it to go in the front yard, 60 by 40, but it would be at least 150 feet setback from the street. On each side of the property is a tree line. So you wouldn't really be able to see the barn from either side of the property. The only sight would be as you drive by. On each side, it's completely lined with trees on both sides of the property.
Okay.
Originally, they said I could have 30 by 50, which was 1,568 square feet. So we're just requesting just a little larger than that.
Okay. I guess my, the biggest concern that I have is that it seems, and that's why I asked you to put this up. Is that your neighbor's house there?
This?
Yes.
This is my house. This is just a detail of my house. The house actually sits way back here.
Way in the back, all right.
This is my house back here.
Yeah, so.
This is just a blow up of.
What's the closest residence to your proposed structure, about?
The closest?
Yeah, other than yours.
Well, there's nothing on this side.
Right.
Because this is.
That's why I was confused about it.
Yeah, there's nothing on this side. This is a driveway. It's, what's that street? Wildleaf. So Wildleaf is here. There's no houses on that, on that street until you get in the back.
Yeah.
On the, on the, I guess that would be the west side, or no, excuse me. North side, I'm sorry. On the north side, there is a house, but that's probably, I'm guessing, 200 to 300 feet from where the structure would be to theirs. There's a house over here, and then they have a small storage barn in between their house. So it would be their house, the storage barn, and then a row of trees, and then my proposed barn.
Okay. Have you talked with that neighbor at all about?
I have.
And tell us about that.
They don't have a problem with it, obviously, because it's set back enough. There's a row of trees, they won't have to look at it. It will have lighting, but the lighting would face the driveway, not the neighboring side.
Okay. And what about entrances to it? Which way will they face?
The entrance would be off the driveway.
All right.
So you would have, I'm proposing two overhead doors facing the driveway. And then you'd have a main door in the back, 3 by 7 door in the back, an entry door.
All right, so the view to the north, let's say, if the trees and everything weren't there, what would you be looking at? Just a solid back wall?
Well, this is the north side here.
Yeah.
And this is all trees.
No, I get it. But what would, if I were standing right next to the building, would I just see a solid wall? Are there windows? What?
Yes, it would be windows. There's windows in here. There's two on each side.
All right.
Just to let some light in.
I'm not just going to be looking at a wall.
No, you are not.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right, good. And can you tell us again the reason you need this? I mean, I know you say it's just a little bit over the statute, but it's kind of a lot, to be honest with you, but that's okay.
The way the, with the cars and the trailers and the bolts that I have.
Yeah.
It's kind of, I need that 60 feet because the way I plan on organizing it that way, and I have so much stuff, it's just, I'm overwhelmed with it just sitting out in the yard, and it's really rotting away. Like I said, I have a vintage car that I like to store and take care of, get that out of the elements. So I have, I have a lot of stuff.
So if you get this, is there going to be any need to store any stuff outside?
Zero.
Zero. And so you wouldn't mind if we put that in as a condition of approval, then nothing stored on the outside?
Not at all, because I would have plenty of room inside to store all my valuables, and it would be protected, and it would be out of the, out of the sight of anybody passing by or the neighbors.
All right. Now, you mentioned the barn next door. Same question I asked the other gentleman. Are you aware of any structures of this size or variances to this degree anywhere in the surrounding neighborhood?
I am not aware of any variances in the neighborhood. But there are a multitude of barns and storage buildings directly across the street. Four or five doors down from me, they have one. And then right around the corner on Plank, they just put up one right there. So.
So you wouldn't consider this proposed building to be out of character for the neighborhood?
I would not, because there's a lot of open land there. They have agricultural, they have, you know, there's corn and then, and different areas of that street. There's a lot of open space there. And because it sits back so far from Harris, I didn't think it would, you know, you go by here at 35 miles an hour, you're going to miss it as soon as you go by it, or you unless you're looking for it.
35?
45?
Okay.
65? I don't know.
Any other questions from the board? No? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Frank Stolt, Stolt Realty Incorporated, PO Box 25499, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a freestanding sign at 1616 Penfield Road. The property is owned by Stolt Realty Incorporated and is zoned general business, SPL number 123.20-2-45, application number 18Z-0033.
Good evening. My name is Frank Stolt, 1618 Penfield Road, Rochester, 14625. And our application is for, I guess, a special permit. We had discussions with Andy and Jim Costello both before we made application. The main issue seems to be, we have an existing, from 1986, agreement with the town for a single road sign for our entire plaza. And this was, like I said, done 30-plus years ago. So we want to put a second one in. Code allows it, a single road sign for each individual tax parcel. And our plaza consists of three different ones. So what we wanted to do is take the existing sign, road sign, bring that into compliance with existing code, add another road sign to service the building, which is now occupied by Advanced Auto Parts and the U.S. Post Office. It was initiated more on our end by the addition of AutoZone down in the Panorama area. They have a road sign, they have two building signs, one the front, one the back. Our building's kind of set deep in. They're obviously a direct competitor with Advanced Auto Parts, and this is one attempt of trying to get more visibility for Advanced Auto Parts in particular. The existing agreement with the town was done back when they were, the town code was trying to be plaza-oriented, like everything in the plaza had to be the same. The total square footages and everything were added all together as opposed to individual storefronts. All this has changed. And as an example, across the street, the owners of Panorama Plaza, the AutoZone is owned by them, but it's a separate tax account. They have a separate road sign. Citizen Bank, Burger King, they're all owned by the plaza. Similar situation now, yet they all have separate signs. So all we're doing, we're trying to get the same type of signage for our side of the street. So what we've done is, we have one building that has seven tenants, would allow up to 50 square foot per side. We would use the existing sign for that. The building in the back has two tenants, Advanced Auto Parts and the U.S. Post Office. That would allow, that parcel would allow 20 square feet for the two tenants. And then we have a vacant parcel in the front, which we're going to combine, if the board allows, with that to give us a total of 40 square feet. So there wouldn't be, shouldn't be any need for a variance for square footages or anything like that.
Okay.
Answer any questions?
Actually, the third parcel in the front has nothing on it, but will have nothing on it but the sign. Is that correct?
And the driveway, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's where the sign's going.
It's going, yes. If you were looking from Penfield Road at the building with Advanced Auto Parts and the Post Office, it would be on the left-hand side, which is a pretty big grass area right now.
And that third parcel is, is it undevelopable as such?
I guess it could be developable. When, when we bought it back, I think nineteen seventy-nine or eighty, there was a gas station there. We've chosen never to develop it because, you know, anything you put there is going to detract from the other two parcels, so we've always left it the way it is.
So, you wouldn't have a problem to, to a condition if we approve this, that there, there would not be a third sign for that front parcel?
No, that would be fine.
Other than when it's there for both?
No, because I am combining the two there. I, you know, in the event, down the road, let's say the building where the Post Office's Advanced Auto Parts ends up being something with ten tenants in it, that they, we might want to come back and, and reapply for, you know, whatever's allowable under those conditions. But we were not going to build on that one, no.
Understandable. Is it safe to say that this visually, these, the Advanced Auto Post Office parcel looks like a separate plaza from the other one?
It does kind of. I mean, it's all connected, obviously, with driveways. We tried to keep the colors the same, landscaping and that type of stuff, and all together. But it is considered, setback considerably deeper than the front parcel, so the visibility coming from, would be east to west, you don't see it right off the bat. And then coming down the hill from, from the west on Penfield Road, from, let's say, coming down the hill, you don't see it till, because it is set deeper than everything around it, and there's ESLs closer to the road. So, it's kind of set in its own little pocket.
Do you have a picture you can put up of the sign you're proposing?
I just had somebody do a, like a little drawing, but I haven't gotten anything in detail because dealing with the Advanced Auto Parts and the Post Office...
You want to just put this up?
I, I, this type of thing, okay.
So, they could...
And that's just to give some idea of what it would look like. I'm, I'm not sure the exact dimensions are going to be, that's why there's nothing on there. Within the forty square feet, so length and width will all depend on, and we can't make submissions to the, they're both national companies, and when I try to talk to them, it's like, "Do you have permission to put it in?" "No, not yet." So, we're just hypothetical at this point.
What's the pole going to look like? What's it going to be constructed like? Do you have...
I'm going to, I'm going to have some, we have one, the one that sits now has a pole inside with some kind of wrapping on it, you know, cladding of some sort. Actually, the same people who did this rendering, I think that Alan Hansford's for the Racket Club, and it'll probably be something similar to their style.
Okay. And the other, you're going to change the existing sign, correct?
Well, yes, we're going to...
Do you have, do you have some idea what that's going to look like? Do you have...
Physically, it would stay the same. We're going to eliminate from the bottom up, taking out some of the lighted area, so we would get within the fifty square foot allowable per side for that building.
Do you need all fifty square foot?
I got seven tenants in there, and actually, there is one right now who's waiting to hear from us. The, because we've had to divide and add additional tenants, so the Goodwill of the Finger Lakes, which is our most recent tenant in that building, is, doesn't have a sign by the road because we got no space for it.
But just looking at what you have now, the advanced auto portion of that sign and the post office portion is about half the available area of the current sign.
No, it's, there, there's like three big ones that go all the way across on the existing sign.
Uh-huh.
And then below that are, are the smaller stores. So, what we're probably going to do is balance off, the Subway Restaurant has like a little bigger block. We would balance that off with the Goodwill of the Finger Lakes block, so it would look symmetrical, and then we would adjust accordingly.
Okay. So, you feel you'll need all fifty square feet?
I would, I actually like more, but I, I figured it was easier to not go for a variance for more square footage. I just want to get the two sides.
Are you going to leave the, the Penn Valley Plaza portion of it?
That part of it was actually put in by the request of the town back then, because they wanted a plaza name. If the, if the board feels like that should leave, we could have it blackened out or something like that.
I just thought, I live a quarter mile away, and if you ask me where Penn Valley Plaza is, I...
Well, that's, like I said, that was back when the, the sign ordinance wanted the plaza name and all that, so I put it up there.
Okay. How, how about lighting? Are you going to be lit?
It would be lit, yes.
Backlit?
Uh, yes, back inside.
Okay.
Probably LED, because that's what the most recent technology is.
Okay. And what you're telling the board is that these signs are in compliance with the code, with the exception of the restriction that was put on in the resolution in eighty-seven?
That's my understanding, Andy. I've talked to Andy about it, too. There was some concern about exact location on a property line of the existing sign versus the other, but I don't think that's any issue from that standpoint.
And it's properly set back, so it's not in the right way, or will be?
The, the new proposed sign, yeah, there's all kinds of room, and we haven't even marked it out, but the, the closest thing to the west is the ESL, which is actually not even ever manned. And then you got to the south is Panorama Plaza, to the north is our building, and then to the east is our other building.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
I've got two. The proposed sign, you aren't looking for any setback variances? You'll be setback from where you're required to?
Yes. I mean, yes, we don't want any variances.
Okay. And the height of the sign? I noticed you mentioned the AutoZone across the street as one that had one on the Burger King. Those are both much lower signs than what you're, than what you currently have. Would you be objectionable to having a sign that was lower, or even your existing sign? You know, bring those down a little more in height?
Well, I wasn't planning on altering the existing sign, except for bringing it in compliance with the thing. I'd, I'd rather keep a little higher for a couple reasons, because right next door there's big trees. And secondly, I think we're allowed up to twenty feet for a sign, and if, you know, matter of fact, the AutoZone sign, I went over and measured it just out of curiosity. Seems to be too close to the road, according to what I measured, but it could be...
But in terms of height, is what I'm...
Yeah, the height, the concern I have of height, I don't know if you've ever noticed, if you've driven by there, there's a, a traffic control device.
One of those silver boxes that's out there, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's not silver anymore, because we got permission to, to have it painted, because it seems like anything within a load gets graffiti, or whatever they call it, tagging, gets painted and everything else. So, I'd rather try to build a little bit of a base, maybe put some planting around the base to keep people away from it, and have a little more height on it.
Okay. Go ahead. Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bruce Hollitt, Benji's Pizza and Grill, 1998 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. Request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1A of the code to allow outdoor dining at 1998 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by Empire Park Management, LLC, and is owned LB. SBL number 093.02-1-12.002. Application number 18Z-0032.
Good evening, guys. My name is Jim Benjamin. I'm the owner of Benji's Pizza and Grill. Bruce is my business partner, who is not here tonight. I'm looking to add six tables to an enclosed dining area that we have attached to the building. It already was set up as a patio as the daycare, when the daycare was there, so they used it as an outdoor area. We plan on adding some landscaping to it, and basically six picnic tables. I've got, talked with all the tenants at the plaza, they don't have any issues. I've been in the plaza for, this is the beginning of our, middle of our sixth month. We have had no issues with parking with anyone in there. Most of the time that I'm open, when most of the tenants in the plaza are gone and closed. There's a bank, there's a dentist, I don't know when he works, he plays a lot of golf, I'm not sure.
That's when he works.
I know. He works early in the morning, I guess. There's a consignment shop and the beauty shop. And typically, I'm the only one there after six o'clock at night. The daycare that is in the other part of the property also is all gone by six o'clock, so there's plenty of parking if I do overload the building at this point. I have not had a lot of dine-in other than Friday nights, so I think I have plenty of room to take care of the guests.
Anyone using this area now? Any of the tenants?
None of the tenants, but they all expressed interest in taking breaks down there now, because we're going to put in some gardens and make it nice. We already did fix up the gazebo that was there. We fixed that up last fall, before we even opened, so that's been...
Okay. Are you planning on having any sort of umbrellas on the tables, or...
Yep, and they'll be below the fence level if we do something like that. So, they're going to be picnic tables and probably Coke umbrellas or something along those lines.
Talked with Andy about that before, because I think there may be limitations.
There's our limitations? Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Signage.
Okay, so far as Coke, all right. So, I'd have to buy just regular?
You going to make sure there are trash cans out there?
There already are, and Marie was out there today and took a look around, so...
Good.
That is there. There is a gate that's on the front that does swing both ways.
Yeah.
But we're probably going to take it out, because it's an old-style fence gate, and it's not very attractive anyways.
Yeah. How about music? You going to play any music back there?
We don't believe so at this point. If we did, it might be somebody playing a guitar, sitting in the gazebo, if we did anything like that. We're not going to pipe music or anything like that. We like the idea of the families sitting out there and enjoying our products.
Okay. And how about lighting?
We do have, we have run some lighting up, beaded lights, and there's three rows of each tied to the gazebo, and they're about the fence. They're about a ten-foot height right now.
Okay. I'm just trying to look through. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We do, it's okay. We do close at nine o'clock.
That's what I was getting, I was looking for. So, uh...
And I, I don't intend...
Eleven to nine.
Yeah, the ice cream season is like a sprint in Rochester, because the season's so short.
Yeah.
You know, you're only busy from now until the kids go back to school.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I got a couple, Dan.
Okay.
Okay. Is this going to be a buy your food and go out there and sit, or are there going to be servers? Going to be, you know, you take your order out there and then they serve?
Yeah, we're counter-service.
Okay, so it, buy your food, walk out there and just eat, right?
Yeah, it's going to stay with our tradition of counter-service, and we might walk the food out there after it's prepared.
Are you thinking of allowing smoking out there or not?
No, there won't be any smoking.
Okay.
It's a family place, that's...
Yep, I agree. It's our focus.
How about vaping?
No, no.
I really wasn't looking for answers.
No, no vaping, no. The employees aren't allowed to.
Nope.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for opening for business. Come on down.
Yeah.
How about cigarettes?
Yeah. All right. Is that it, Andy?
That's all I got.
That's all you got? Okay. So, the public hearings will be adjourned, we'll take a brief recess. Boy, we moved along pretty well tonight, that's good.
Lovely.
And reconvene in the back and take action on the items. Thank you very much. And let's see, who's here? Number two? Let's start with number two.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further action or review.
Second. Okay, we have a secret motion that we declare this a type-two action that's made by Marie, with a second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye.
And I'm going to make a motion to approve this request for a variance. I don't believe any undesirable change will be produced. In fact, I think it will improve by having every item in a shed. The applicant has tried looking at other options, including an hydraulic lift, and feels this is the only way to alleviate his concern. It is somewhat substantial, but again, I don't think it will have an impact adversely on the neighborhood. If anything, it really only impacts the homeowner, because the addition is going to the south and will affect him primarily.
So, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Under seconds it? Mike?
To me, and I indicated this in hearing, I think this is way too big. You know, you get to a certain point, and cars and vintage cars and mobile homes and stuff shouldn't necessarily be stored in a residential lot, regardless of how big it is. And my problem, I guess, here is it's so open. This particular area is really open and visible. You got, you know, two white buildings there now, that look to be about the same size. If you eliminate the garage, it's, the existing building is actually larger. So, I just think it's too much.
So, to your point, and, you know, that, that is a concern, there's also precedence that, I think, in the neighborhood, because it looks like there is a bigger structure already there.
But that's down lower in the valley, and there's more trees and trumps and stuff. This is right in the beginning, and it's open all the way around, with very few trees.
But if you look at it, Mike, he did the roof lines, he put different pitches on the roof. So, when you look at the house and the other thing, they're even.
Right.
So, even if you come from the south and you look at it, you really can't see the new part of it. You'll still see the two roof lines. I mean, I'm just saying.
That's kind of where I said with, with Joe, I mean, from a visual standpoint, from here at the side, it's not going to read bigger unless you're literally staring it from the back of the property, looking at it from the back. That's the only place you'll actually see that there's a lower extension, which blends in with the house. So, if you were standing back and all you saw was a silhouette, I don't think you would see it any bigger anywhere.
He definitely was, was thoughtful about how he planned it out.
Oh, no, it's a real question about it. I, I agree. He's done what he can.
And I might feel differently if this was going in a different direction, what it's going to the south.
If it stuck out in one way where you could visually...
Okay. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, thank you.
That's all right. No, I just wanted to point out two things. Of the, the rear of the property, that's already purchased by the town of Penfield, so it can never be developed. So, that will never be an impact to anybody back there as far as visuals.
Okay.
And the other thing was, if you read the petition, the wording of the petition, you know, all of my neighbors were showing the drawings that I put up, and they, and also they all read this, and it says that I agree with this addition, would have no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, not be a detriment to the property, and in fact, it would be a positive addition in that it would allow storage of items inside and outside, rather than outside. So, I just wanted to bring these two things up.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve? A second? Any conditions?
I don't have any conditions.
It's, you know, I'm thinking buffering. I don't know if that would help with it, but I mean, it's so big to buffer it.
Yeah.
Because you're right, it is wide open. It is wide open. Okay. So going through the standards here, I think. Just. There it is. All right, Marie, you can chime in here if you want. You don't, I'm assuming you don't think there'd be an undesirable change in the neighborhood because there are similar structures in the, in the area, generally speaking.
Right. I think I went through most all of them.
He considered other, you made the point he did consider other methods, including hydraulic lifts. I do think it is a substantial variance. It's kinda hard. You folks may disagree, but that's just about one factor of five. I don't think there's any, any proof or any indication there's gonna be any adverse effect on the physical or the environmental conditions. And I also think it's clearly self-created. I just wanted to run through those, but I don't know if anybody has anything to add on the factors or not. Okay, so a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. And let's see.
You can root for one opposed.
Four to one, yeah. Mike opposed. You did.
But he raised his hand, so I wanted to make sure you caught that.
Carter's next.
Yep, let's do that. Number four, Carter Rowe.
So I'm going to make a motion that this is a type-two action, having, requiring no further review or action.
It's under seeker, okay.
Under seeker.
So for the seeker application, Marie's made a motion to declare it a type-two action.
Second.
Well, we have two seconds. We're gonna go with Joe because he seems rather anxious to second on seeker motion.
Or maybe he just don't hear.
All right. Motion to, type-two action by Marie.
No, it's still two.
Type-two.
Just type-two.
And a second by Joe.
I do, but not as loud as you did. See you win, yeah.
Speak up, speak up.
All those in favor? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve this request. I, again, don't feel that there will be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. This applicant has gone through every other option and this seemed to be the one that made the most sense to them. It would be a financial hardship to look at some other things like moving. Yes, it's, well, it's, I don't really think it's a substantial variance. Also, there is no neighbor directly next to them. The neighbor is set well back from the road, so really wouldn't be affected and is in support of the variance. Again, no adverse environmental impact and, you know, they have to accommodate their growing family.
I'll second. Well, Mike. We are going with Mike. Any conditions?
No. Oh, I actually just wanna be sure that, that the addition does not come out any further than the other addition on the other side of the house.
Can I just have that? As a condition? Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve with that condition by Marie and a second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody. Okay. Good luck.
Harris, Rose.
Yep, number five. Okay. For number five, for seeker, I will make a motion that we declare this a type-two action, requiring no further review under the statute.
Second.
Mike seconds my motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Again, I think we have a situation here where we have a large structure with a large variance, without question. But I am going to make a motion to approve, given the neighborhood, given the other structures in the neighborhood. I was really confused, as you guys could probably tell by the survey, like, I don't think there's a house here. But in any event, you know, there really isn't as large as this is going to be. I mean, I kinda echo your, your thoughts on that other one that, you know, when does, when do you say it's time to take stuff and store it somewhere else, even though that's not convenient, it's expensive and all that stuff? But in any event, given the large size of this and the neighborhood, generally speaking, I am making a motion to approve this one. I don't see any, anything out of character with the neighborhood. It's certainly self-created, there's no question about that. But I, again, no proof that there'd be any adverse physical or environmental effects. Showing a need for it. The condition, I guess, no outside storage on the property. That's my motion.
I think the other condition, I wanna make sure is that the other shed is taken down.
Good point.
I'll second that motion. I think this is a different situation because of the buffering, the location, the lack of other places to put it on the property.
Right, that's a good point, because of the. Yes, thank you. Boy, I'm glad you guys are on top of this today. Okay, so we have a motion to approve with conditions by me and a second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You okay? You get those conditions?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
Yeah, you too. Let's go to top of the list, are we? Number one.
Okay, I'll make a motion, this is a type-two action, no further action required.
Second. Seeker motion by Joe to declare it a type-two action and a second by Andrus. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this, to put it where he wants to because of the slope of his land, that it's actually more buffered down there and that the neighbor would also not mind to be in there. I don't think it would bother neighbors on any side, so that's why I make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion approved by Joe, a second by Andrus. Okay, I.
I think, I mean, I'll go with the, I mean.
Sure, go ahead.
What the neighbor has in back there with what's built out with the basketball hoop and other things, so close to the edge of the line and the other things he has, his compost bins and things like that, I don't think it's gonna add anymore. If not, it'll actually kind of make those things blend in, as, as the neighbor said, he'd actually appreciate it.
Right. I, I think as long as there's a basketball court there, that would be true. How long that will stay, I don't know, but probably. Somebody brought up a point about the slope kinda being the same anyway. Yeah, and I thought that was a pretty valid point.
This is a big backyard. He's got almost half of his lot backyard. I don't see any reason why. What he basically said was, if he moves it 10 feet to comply with the, aside from the slope thing, and I didn't see that either as a, as a big issue. But if he moved it 10 feet to comply with the code, it would be further in his yard, he'd have less usable space. Well, anybody can.
That's true.
He's got a big backyard with nothing in it. And I just don't see he's showing the, the need to have a, an eight-foot variance.
Fair enough. Okay, so you made a motion to approve, Joe? Any conditions? And you seconded it.
Correct.
So we have a motion to approve by Joe, no conditions, and I think no conditions about the buffering or anything. Well, he didn't, he doesn't really have any buffering.
There's no other way to buffer. I mean, there's a big tree in the back, it's two foot from the line.
Yeah. Okay.
It's kind of in the woods already a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion to approve and a second by Andrus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Two opposed.
I'm sorry, who's the second opposed?
Me.
Okay.
I just thought it was too substantial a variance, but I didn't raise my hand, I joke, calm down, buddy. Yeah, I know you looked at me. I felt it.
Wow.
Let's see, we did two.
Number three, that's me.
Andrus, number three.
Okay, number three. Move this to a type-two action, no further review under seeker.
Second.
Okay, seeker motion by Andrus, type-two action, seconded by Marie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm gonna move that we grant the variance. There's a, I think, the way the land is laid out with so many different slopes and the drainage and things like that, it becomes difficult for a lot of placements where you could put a shed along the back. The applicant said the color and siding will match the home. So in terms of any kind of undesirable changes, I think they'll be mitigated because it blends in with the home. I think the placement really has to go where it says, there's no other options in terms of, as, as the applicant said, they would have to build up a foundation below it so, you know, have other expenses coming from that. The neighbor to the east, right, is that the east, the one that's affected that way? Or to the right of the driveway? Had no, had no issue and it's also quite a ways away from that area. This is self, self-created, but I still think this is probably one of the better solutions for where to put the shed. Because it does kinda show, I mean, they laid it out there in the grass with, and the photos on the record show that as well. But it seems to go there, and I don't see an issue with it.
What about the fact of moving it to the west?
A little bit. I don't, there's, there's two ways to say it. I guess if it was myself, I'd rather have that space to move between the house and the shed to move things along the back as opposed to not, you know, because then you can't move at all from the other side along the property line. So I think if you split the difference and went a little closer, then you kind of hinder.
I think aesthetically, too, it makes more sense to be in alignment with the driveway. Didn't cut you off.
No, 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 just, I don't know, to me, that placement seemed to work.
I thought her answer in that regard was good. When you, when you asked the question, should you have answered like, because I hadn't thought about that. I thought you should have given the answer. Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Andrus for the reasons stated. And a second by Marie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So moving right along. That is correct.
I don't remember either, but yeah, I did.
So we did four. We did five, six. Mike?
Okay, I'm gonna move that this is an unlisted action, issue a negative declaration, no adverse environmental impacts.
Second. All right, so a seeker motion by Mike to declare this an unlisted action and also to make a finding that there's no significant impacts. And Andrus seconded it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He did say negative declaration.
Yes. Yep. And Andrus seconded it. Okay, all those in favor on the seeker?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this. I think the request is totally consistent with other properties in the area. I don't know how they did things back in 86, but I, I don't think, whatever relevance that had doesn't fit in now. It looks like two separate plazas to me, one setback further from the other. And I think, you know, you made a good point with regard to advanced auto being sort of set back and out of the way. So one thing I would put as a condition, though, is that 16 is the front parcel and 16, 16 is the front parcel. 1614 is the back parcel. And those two would be, would not have a separate freestanding sign other than what's, other than what we're approving. That's my motion. I'm not sure what other standards would apply to this.
Well, did you, didn't you ask him a question about agreeing to not put one on, on the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So basically, the front back, 1616 and 1614, they're getting one sign on 1616, which covers 16 that and the parcel where the actual two stores are.
So which, which address would not have a sign?
It would be 16. 1616 is the front.
Okay, so no freestanding sign on 1616.
Well, no freestanding, that's where the sign's going. But that, that covers that sign, so there's no freestanding sign on the back portion.
Oh, 1614.
1618, actually.
Is it?
What building's on the one you, that you want no sign?
It was 1416.
The post office and that other one?
No, no, no separate freestanding.
Okay, you got that?
The two properties get one sign, one freestanding sign.
Yes, in total. Let's make sure we have the two properties correct.
14 or 18?
I was looking at, here.
It's 1618 and 20.
About 1616.
1618 and.
14, 16, and 18.
I'm looking at the lead sheet and it says 1618 and 20.
That's not right, 1614.
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna believe him or my eyes.
It just says 18, 16, and 20.
So just so, so she can get it right.
Yes. The parcel that has the two stores, advanced auto on the post office, does not get a freestanding sign. The vacant front parcel.
Has no building but a sign.
Sign for both, that and.
So you guys can fill in the addresses. You got it.
There's the president, we're setting signs on vacant land.
Yes. Okay, that's, that is interesting.
Right, treat them as a single parcel.
Right.
For this purpose. Yeah, because it's access to the parcel in back.
Condition, we combine the two parcels?
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to approve with that condition. Did we get a second?
Yes.
Bye.
Me.
By Andrus. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think last but not least, number seven. For seeker, I will make a motion that we declare this an unlisted action and further that we issue a negative deck because there's no significant impact.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on seeker? All right, my motion to declare it unlisted and a negative deck, Mike seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, conditional use permit. I am gonna make a motion to approve this. There's gonna be, first of all, nobody's really using it now. He's cleaned it up and I think a lot of restaurants and merchants wanna take advantage of the short, pleasant season that we have here, spring and summer, so I have no problem giving him an opportunity to do that. He's gonna have limited lighting, maybe some soft, not piped-in music, garbage cans. I do think that, given his hours compared to the other tenants, parking is not an issue.
No smoking.
No smoking or vaping. And any other thoughts or conditions on the use of it? Nope? All right, so that's my motion.
Second.
Mike went first. He hit the buzzer first. So my motion to approve with those findings, Mike second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. And we already, did we table number two? Did we formally do that?
Earlier.
We did it?
Yeah, we tabled it earlier.
Okay. I know we talked about it, but I just don't know if we did it, but let's, yeah, we did it. Okay, so any further information or business? Nope? Okay, then we will stay adjourned. Good work. We'll see you next month. Thank you.